We're locked.
Thank you for attending our real schedule of the city council meeting for July twenty twenty five. Any member of the community in the audience desire to speak on an item listed for action on the agenda? Please complete the comment registration card located on the table at the back of the room and submit it to the city manager clerk. As the city manager clerk has confirmed, I will now call this meeting to order its start. Alright, let's do the invitation.
Okay. May God bless you, good health and protect you with his almighty strength and keep you always in his tender care. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. Alright, item number three, approval of consent agenda. Any councilmember may by request to be mayor, or any item listed below for further consideration or discussion.
I'm sure we're all ready to say agenda.
Yeah, that's right.
Who does this do next? I'm pretty sure I called you, not David. Do you have a motion?
I would.
I'll second.
Motion by Keith, second by David, I'll call the role Keith. David?
Yeah.
Bubba?
Yes.
Braxton?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Right, agenda item number four, consideration of resolution zero seven dash one four dash twenty twenty five A regarding a bid. Award for the sidewalk and pedestrian access improvements and enhancements project fund by the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty four general obligation bonds. What you got for us today?
We are asking for the Georgia bid to Atlas Paying. Their bid amount was one million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, sixty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. Recommended from a project engineer and that amount from color engineering. And the bid tab range from, they want a low bid at one point seven, bid range up to over three million. Motion around two, engineers estimate was about two million, maybe under small. Here with others for opening the bids, if there is better than those, three point eight is our high bid. It is one point seven nine five, they expect to add their first line item in there. The engineers calculated that submission.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I know that they're below bid and everything, you always, apples for apples, I don't know our engineer approved it, right? I just can't believe there's such a discrepancy, there's such a, there's, from the high to the low, such a big amount.
There is.
It's been. Rudy's working for us now.
Rudy is working for us now, but I mean, you, I mean, one point, one point eight, two point one, two, two point six. And then three point eight was always high, so I think if you had a one point seven and everything else was around three point eight. And I think so I have to look at, the engineers verify whether the quantities and the costs.
I saw that, I mean, they verified, you know, when they verified that, they checked it, apples for apples, it's just a small bid. But sometimes a lot of these guys, they just, even if they can't even talk, but they do this, you know, something like that.
You have to wonder, and do you know what else they worked on, this Atlas?
They've been around, they've been around for a long time.
Yes.
The water is more than.
Okay, and what's the completion date on that?
Uh, that would be in the contract.
Okay.
Count on speakers, count to seventy days, I don't know if one hundred and eighty or could be. It's not four, but definitely will be within this good year, please, this one year.
Okay, what, what was the original amount we had budgeted for this on the bond?
Three over three million.
Okay.
So with engineering design, we're still, we're having to get cost savings for this project and only apply to other projects. With street regulations.
Cool. Any more questions?
Um, yeah.
Huh?
It's street regulation.
Yeah, hopefully. Does anybody in the audience have anything about this specific agenda item?
If you all return on your microphone.
Are you sure, Nate, you seem to speak right up when it.
You have to know.
Yeah.
Did you not wear your.
I'm following those.
Did you not wear your jersey today? I did. Thank you, guys.
Okay, do you mind making a motion to this person?
I make a motion for.
Thank you, Father.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by mother, second by David, I'll call the role Bubba.
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
Keith?
Yeah.
Braxton?
Yeah.
Motion passes four to zero.
Is that on somewhere where we can look at where you gotta put the sidewalks and all that stuff?
Um, it's on the website, I know, I've found it on there before.
Don't stay away from here.
I think you did.
We're getting all up in here.
Yeah, there's, 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 there's some on a meter.
Yeah, and I think it's on the other side, the mid bar side, you know, I think it's last year.
Yeah, you know, I think it's basically gonna go down a meter to.
To bend.
Yeah. Okay, but then I didn't know five, consideration of resolution zero seven dash one four dash twenty twenty five B regarding compliance and mandatory participation in the House Hall of Recycling Services for residential customers. What you got, Nate?
Let's pull this up for you to track. In two thousand and ten, we, Mr. Becker, we passed resolution eleven zero two twenty ten C that basically made our recycling program voluntary. This is when we started recycling, it was still kind of new. Under this, we had a separate recycling contract and separate sanitation contract. So customers who did not want recycling, did not have to pay the fee for that. I don't know how many people took advantage of this, they were supposed to have income consideration, they were supposed to go into hardship, and they're supposed to reapply annually. And that has not happened, and right now we have thirty-three people on it. It's not that it's something of a cost savings, what we've done in the past to tell waste connections how many people we have, they've done for a bill. We spend more time trying to calculate that than we saving it, and because we combined our sanitation and our recycling contracts in one, our base rate includes recycling, so there's not an extra fee for recycling. If we have a customer that does not want to recycle, there's no penalty if you're not putting their recycling card out, and they're still paying for that card whether they have it or not. So based on how we approved the rates last month, we just want to bring this, basically terminates this twenty fifteen-year-old voluntary recycling. Bringing it along with sustainability and environmental stewardship because everyone recycles.
So this is a mandatory.
Corrected or due to cost.
Yeah, we're not telling you, you have to do it, but you know, you got the card, and that's all we, you know, you wanna do it.
But what about, so wait a minute, do these thirty people that are already on this, do they have cards or do they receive cards?
They will have the option to take a card if they want it, and if they don't, we won't force them.
He won't, yes.
But they're not gonna get a four dollar fifty bucks credit.
Alright, so are you gonna just, is somebody just gonna call them and say, hey?
There is, I'm a blood patient with blood, I think we have a blood or drought.
Okay, yeah, what a layer.
Perfect, yeah.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
Sure.
And Keith, Keith?
Second.
Second by David, if you would. Call the role Keith.
Thank you.
David?
Yeah.
Bubba?
Yeah.
Braxton?
Yeah.
Motion passes four to zero.
Oh, that's me, sorry. Agenda item number six, consideration of resolution zero seven one four twenty twenty five C regarding appointments to the board for adjustments.
So the mention of a board adjustment has not been met in a very long.
Since like nineteen ninety-two?
Since the early nineties, late eighties, and they've only met in about six times in history. That's not bad, our code is very specific, we do a lot of planning and development, and we negotiate a lot of things in the process with planning and zoning council, which is doing a board adjustment. However, to be a English spelling state of a home, I am practicing, so we must have a planning zone commission to handle board adjustment. We've let some term expire on our board adjustments, so we're ahead of five years to give the volunteer to serve on the board adjustment. And I do not foresee a meeting in the near future, immediate future, or longer future, but we will at least have a board adjustment. To be in compliance with state law.
Yeah, let's keep us compliant. Does anybody out there have a question?
Would you have to do this, would you go outside now?
Uh, probably a cookie.
They get two bottles, they get cold water.
Two bottles for that, for everybody.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by David, second by Braxton, David?
Yeah.
Braxton?
Yeah.
Bubba?
Yeah.
Keith? Motion passes four to zero.
Alright, agenda item number seven, discussion and consideration regarding section twenty-four dash one eight eight of the city code for C two commercial district zoning.
Okay, second, just pull up here for you. We have in front of us, and what we review is C two commercial district zoning. We have all the permitted uses listed under twenty-four one eight eight A. And then we come down to B, which is specific uses, meaning that with a specific use permit approved by the council of the recommendation, plans, and having a hearing. These items under B can go in, I'm gonna jump down to B six, which is a church, synagogue, mosque, temple, or similar building designed for a place of worship, a church, et cetera. So a church may go into C two if it has direct and primary means of ingress on Britain, half near, may, or pen. And then has a minimum lot size of a half acre. And is not in a shopping center or a strip mall. We currently have a HUD application in the foothold while we review this. We have an interest in a building that is in the.
Dale Mall, right?
Well, yes, so what's that shopping plaza?
The shops, et cetera.
Uh, the shop, no, no, the shops are a complex.
Dale Mall, cities.
Yes, so this is actually, could be a good fit. For that building, it's waiting for a little while, they won't go in there, but our code says that you have to have half an acre. Which is probably for a traditional dating church, they have a campus with multiple buildings. I, I'm hesitant that going through a HUD application, there'll be some spots open, or we could end up with a commercial which is nothing but churches. So this is just a discussion on this, we're not looking to change anything right now, but if, if we wouldn't want to consider allowing a church, we can limit it to one church in a shopping center or shopping plaza. So this is a discussion of whether our code is current of our intent, or whether this is a little bit.
I, I think the code is just fine. My question is, is the church only here? Right over there, and they have that church there next to stage seven, so I guess they have a special use permit?
No, because every now and then half I thought that was, there was one that came in and they did not, if everyone walks in and follows the rules, and does the permitting process, and tells you what they're gonna do, that's wonderful. Some just kind of gravitate from one intent over to something else that we don't notice, and that was what happened with that place.
What does the, what does the shopping center on, what does he say, or has it got any control?
They want a tent, didn't it?
They want a.
They want a tent in the building.
Yeah, so it did be fine, didn't it?
Yes, so I mean, if it would become a place of selling, it would be straggling, would be fire suppression, et cetera. The property owners, if, that if you prefer a tent, instead of a council chair.
What do y'all think?
Do we know that they're trying to take over 20,000 or are they trying to take? Just a little?
I think so.
I think so.
You want them all?
Yeah, I don't know. I think the code's fine. I just.
If we stand on the code today, I'm confused. If we stand on the code today, will it go out yet?
No.
We have to change as of the PUD or another change?
My concern on the PUD is there's a potential that it. I want to say spot zoning, but our code says you can do this and here comes the PUD to circumvent our code.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, that's, that's my concern.
It's not a decision for staff to make, but staff thought was like if this, you know, if this can go through the process or this is something that we just want to have a discussion and see.
Have we done this before with anything? Like a spot zoning like that, like you're describing?
I'm sure we have.
I'm sure we have.
It's fine.
I just, my concern is that we just, we, I feel like we allow our own exceptions to our code. And our code is there and it's written. Let's just follow. I don't think there's anything wrong with the code as it stands written.
When Jeremy, you know, down there at the, Jeremy built those, built business two places on the old Carlisle area. Did we have to do a PUD? Did you do a PUD today? Because it was zoning, it was zoning for.
At first I was presenting.
Homes, business, and everything else. And then that's probably one of the best things we've done because Jackie Cooper, he wasn't going to do anything where they, you know, we had to wrestle with him on that whole area because it was just vacant lots. He wouldn't have built anything on it. And so when this came along, it was all neutralized, you know, and I'm almost positive we got to do it.
There was, there was the May Avenue office.
Yeah, and this is the best thing we ever did because it's, you know, it's, it's really a neat facilities that they built. The villages are all nice. They've got great tenants.
They have great tenants that are a lot more serviceable.
Yeah, and, and one of them, right in the street, when, when, when we, when we made that happen, one of the requirements that I asked for was there were no cuts to be in the streets that could hold you on getting to the May Avenue. And that would satisfy, you might have cut through the streets and get in. And to be honest with you, they don't have that in the structure anyway, but we didn't know, you know, that they got, you know, really very, really traffic, it's more professional groups, you know, servicing our clients and stuff, so. But we had to think of everything and that's what we're doing now, you know, to kind of think it all out. Because it's kind of a new, new little area. And we turned Jeremy down from the other area over by the Baptist Church. Remember there was, there was one thing, who's what it takes two, remember that, don't you?
I was that.
He was wanting to make two, uh, so I did the same thing with Joe Quaid. And so honestly, we can build two more commercial roles there. And the difference in my mind there was, it, it could go spot, but you know, it's almost the same thing. In my mind was you have enough homes over there that are right even closer to the ones that we had. And it was just not fit at the time. And he was so disappointed that we all talked about it and we decided at this time it wasn't right for that area. You know, you have a lot of compliance, a lot of people saying, there'll be parking right there on my block, right on my street, in my driveway. And again, that's all, it's all very negative, but that's what you think of in your fighting system, you know. They're going to park right by, I should park and, and you know, where my daughter parks in Kansas City. You know, yes, it's true or not true, but we've got to consider those kinds of things. And it was just, it just wasn't fit at that time. And I think he's going to come back and try to, I guess we'll go through it again and maybe it's fit that way. But you know, that's, that's why we have you guys.
So.
So. So anyway, so that's just, you know, there's some things to think about and I'm glad we have a, a, a discussion right now. And not just sit here and say, yeah, let's do it both and then go back and be like, oh, I'm trying to, you know, we checked that out, that out. And again, I know the, I know the guy that's involved, you know, he's, he's, uh, one of the guys that's, that's one of the main folks in it. Is, is, is real estate business, very, very, he was business group, you know. So I mean, they're good, they're good folks, just like all of us, you know, and so it's not like they're coming in from Georgia and they're bringing their cows and horses with them or something like, you know, not have to worry about that, so. So anyway, that's kind of my thought.
I would like to go take a, a more study, look at it.
Why not? Just in regards to building 20,000 square foot space, there is a hallway down to build in that. When Chardin's built in there, there would be, there would be a way they could split it. I mean, I get this is easy for the tenant, but it won't help me though. But it is, uh, I mean, it's, uh.
Yours always a little.
It is, it's.
We never would have thought that.
Never would have thought that. So with that, so they rezoned it, just rezoned the whole corner, or they ended up just rezoning that little random square?
PUD. And you probably haven't reworked it, and I believe the PUD has submitted was to remove, provide exclusion for 60 of the city code. So it would not be just, it would either be, if it was for a building, there'd be a concern of one property within the same district. Goes through that whole shopping plaza that scares the use and result businesses there just to our churches. But that would be a decision to make as a.
Because it would end up being the whole building, not just.
Not saying it would, but possibly potentially, so.
Well, and I do, I, I do know specifically about that building, that, that building. The word that leases, it doesn't own it. They lease it from the owner and they lease it out. So that lease is actually going to be done in the next three or five to two years. So if they have this PUD in the next, or the next leasing group comes in.
Yeah.
Maybe the whole town, or whatever. You lose other retail tenants in there because we have Goodwill, which is revenue, it's one W. And so I've been all proves.
Here's another question. And I, I got to ask about this because like people in our zoning, zoning community. We had pawn shop one of the ones there because they, they were over here with bicycle places.
Well.
And so they went, okay, so we had a, a, a realtor group.
Nice, nice.
No, no, this was a, this was a pawn shop that was built there. Right.
He's pointing where it is. It's, it's like just.
Yes, yeah. Nice people, you know, cooperating with the village and those fellow property was recovered a lot, a lot. And it's, but they wanted to go over, around, around some of that where the Goodwill was now, that area. And so it took us, took us 12 years to get a grocery store there. And all of a sudden, somebody was put a pawn shop right in that same area. And I'm going, we, we, we did a whole community involved search. What do you want to, what do you want to do? Our, our, our goal and what we all wanted was something really neat and nice in that area because we don't have any more. Everything was just taken out, you know, and we had to redo a lot. And so they came to me and they were going to do a PUD or whatever they had to do, could have been there and, you know. I said, you guys are great. We love you, but we don't, you know. I asked the realtor, I said, would you put that pawn shop in one of your shopping centers, you know, one of your bicycle shop? Would you do that? Who would answer it? And I said, well, we're just the same way, you know, we, we don't, nothing against you guys. You've got a business that people want, you know, but not here. This is not, this is not what our. And they were very good business people and very successful. We, we had good, good tax revenue from them over here. But, but it's a pawn shop. I mean, you know, we've all, they have their purpose, but it's not quite in the middle. Where we wanted to set up, you know, a stretch of entity of all good things, like the grocery store where Goodwill's great. Well, you probably do love, y'all have Goodwill. And I said, yes, it's very nice. And you know, it's, 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 it does let bicycles hanging outside saying, you know, come, come, come get in and you can have your money. You know, come on in or something else. I said, it's just the thought, you know, you're not going to get class acts, you know, like we've been getting, you know. And so anyway, I had a couple of folks go and link me and she didn't hang in and you called me a, a quick one that wrong, something like a, like a.
Grasping hand?
Well, that too, yeah, I did, you know, somebody, somebody was high in my room, I was with that. I said, well.
Pomposass?
Pomposass, oh yeah, no, no, that's wrong. But you know, so anyway, we, we gone through that and everything. We, we, and we almost had that there. I mean, I, it was very strong at the time. That's, we were going, we don't have anybody coming in. Yes, but we, we talked about planning, you know, and making, making deals where people in. So we've got to start somewhere. We'll start with the pawn shop. So that's the kind of thing, and, and the only reason I brought that up is because this may or may not be the same, you know, idea. We talked about this at church and it's, it's on Sunday and you know, it's not, you know, it's not something that we're all afraid of or anything. It's just does that, does that fit your, your idea, uh, our retail areas that we don't have, you know, we're, we're out.
Our, our space is one of them here.
Uh, so anyway, and, and, and then I threw back at those guys, I said, guys, I mean, don't you have somewhere else you can go? I mean, there's someplace, why would you kind of put all your, you know, all your chips here in this particular area that had most neat and everything? But it just came up and, you know, and I said, if you, if you even can't get it, it's not going to be fast, so. You know, and I said, and I, you know, I'm, I'm a bit of a listy, I don't, you know, I have to meet without counsel, talk like we're talking now and say, you know, what are you guys going to, going to think about? What is your design? What's your plan? You know, because y'all, y'all haven't been here that long. But you've been here in the village and you've seen the, the plan that we had 15 years ago and how it's coming for us. It's working, you know, and we've had a lot of people work on it. And so, you know, our growth has been great. We have, we have the best, uh, probably the best growth we've ever had in the last few years. And I have to say that tomorrow online, selfless administry, so that's, that's, that's fine. It's great. So anyway, that's, that's my, that's my thought, you know, if you guys come up with anything else, this is our, our part. But we have to probably give them a, give them an idea about what's thinking in one of these days so they can go along, move on, get, decide not.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Anybody else?
I disagree with what you said, the, the plan, the work, the, the.
Yeah.
Growth is pretty good to take a lucrative structure that used to be, you know, attractive for profit business. Take away all that daytime business hour foot traffic.
We almost had a very structured.
Land, landwork.
Place over there too. That was, that was new.
It was place for.
The lot of, so, places you pick your storage units. You can insert a football, they were, they're all there and now they're. What does that do for the village? Jackie, that's Jackie Cooper and Jim Wees. Jim Wees is a fine realtor, just basketball.
Fine.
And Jim, you know, Jim is just with Jackie, well, we just wouldn't do it. We want, you know, real estate area, we don't want to hold people. I said, what does that do for the village?
It do good.
It's, we don't make, maybe we don't make, we just, it's not, it's not in our book. So we had to make five inward years over that kind of thing. You'd break silly things. We'd have a grow, a growing, what was it? Farm?
Yeah, it was a, a whole lot of farm, something that grew. Uh, plants, fruit and vegetables and stuff like that. Above ground or something like that.
Jackie, Jackie put a car while.
All right.
Let's, let's move on to this.
Does anybody out there have anything they would have to say about?
Do we have a representative from the church group?
Well, the, the church group is not, this is not about that particular project. It's just.
Just.
Zooming forward with the PUD. I also get feedback from you all about whether you think that, you know, the standard that's written, even if they, you know, if you don't want to explain to a lot of churches everywhere this, if you think that there are different standards on how to be better or more okay. Because like David mentioned at the beginning of the discussion, when the city created this particular requirement for specific usage of churches, I was in church and we're building campuses. And so we want to be sure that it's a certain size and that it wasn't taking over shopping areas. But there are other things that could potentially were like, as removing the size requirement or limiting it to like number 25% in commercial building, something like that, uh, just ideas out there.
What do you?
Otherwise, I can imagine that project would fall into the PUD before you guys can make decisions on that.
Okay. How, what do you use, how do you feel the code is at this sense?
Uh, it's.
Do you think it's safe?
I think it's fine when you're, I mean, I have no opinion friendly. I mean, it can be completely identity. Uh, I will say churches aren't a complete identity because a lot of people in the church are really good at a lot of things. And the well down there, I can put a little shopping, I'm probably sure it wasn't a big thing, so, you know. It might increase visibility, but anything that we gather from outside the village, it might be a little bit of a bit of an argument. So I'm like, that's just a walker. So just the things to consider. You guys don't have to make a decision.
Okay. Sounds good. Can I just, um, time to think about it? All right. Thank you. All right. Good night. Number eight, um, report reviews. Hey, you want to start us off with, I need to report.
Today's financial, uh, question on what was submitted, note irregularities. Better than they were in June, July, getting June and this year closed out, so, uh, we should probably have June, year end closeouts too, y'all.
I'm not putting pressure on her, she's got a lot of. How, have you gotten the new software to start working on the financials yet?
Oh, no. That's a lot of.
How about then we do something?
We did and we've started the process.
Oh wait, we started, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's just all.
Sales, sales tax, closing up here, about seven, only sell 1.1 million. Mayor collections. Due to capital improvements, public safety and general fund versus total collections, show hundred foot in monthly than how much year to date. Uh, use tax was down some this year, uh, but the sales tax made up for that gap. And all taxes as reported, I would, about 3.23% higher than last year, so we did budget pretty flat. Sitting in pretty good shape. Uh, I've seen hammers on page, and all credit lines here somewhere. Been kind of a crazy weekend, a little rain coming past. I heard about 24 to 5 inches of rain and when you get rain that fast, it just doesn't do it out fast enough. We will be starting the, so, should be getting contracts signed on the sidewalks this week and getting that project up. Update from the start date, maybe what the project schedule is. The streets project should be wrapping up this week. They have a little bit of work left on Sunset, Carlisle Complete. Then we'll move into the trainers projects, which is Bill and Try from Brighton Downey. Nichols Road from Andrew to Britton in 12th Circle. Should be getting close to any of the specs ready for the parks project with law. And begin, what's, city clerk training last week, learned a lot on changes to use of record retention. Open records requests are changing slightly. We have a couple legislative changes that require some ordinance updates. Nothing too severe, we'll bring that to you. The open municipality annual conference meeting of Old City this year, September 9th to the 11th. Uh, so if you'd like to do all that or part of that, please let us know. So we meet your minister. Again, I apologize everyone for the inconvenience this evening because I hung 7:06. And I apologize for my lack of proof readings because I don't catch that until someone asks me about it on Saturday morning. But I thank you very much for letting me know about that, so we didn't bother to do a convenience app. And, uh, didn't formally have a song, we have a plaque, we forgot the comments, and sit down for another one. And we will get that mounted on Civic Plaza this week, Thursday, the way we did it earlier, basically, I do get up there and hang that for.
Did, did we have any flooding, uh, big flooding problems that fire, fire department responded to or people were calling, there was a house being flooded or anything?
Well. From what I saw, thanks about sunny, sunny?
Yes.
Sunny, had quite a bit of water.
Uh, I don't think we had any slipwater rescues. We did have a call for a, an odor and our gas detect wasn't working, so we requested Nils Hills help, the truck they brought. It was someone's yard that went around the curb, public works around, they filled that back in, it was a longer, it didn't clean the leg, so. I don't think we had any, any weather related emergencies.
That was quite a bit of water.
Yes. Do you know how the village drive, Grange did?
How what?
Do you know how the village drive?
Our, our Trish.
Sorry, Grange.
Our case, we called it. I had a military bomb chamber on Saturday evening and I can tell you, I did about 35 miles on our old Patrick and I was able to maybe go for 40 once I got in the. But it did slow down since we got a chamber, so I, it was a cross match over words to get that between the two of the grid. Uh, really, you know, the next development we have where someone complains about detention points cost too much and import detention retention points. I wish I'd have developed one that had those from the 50s on.
I'll tell them by.
He grasped it and we were the library.
Don't worry.
Yeah, I had a question on that. The library, uh, because at the time, she wasn't able to make it, but it's still summer reading. It's not too late to sign up. Programming is going to be great. They have 50 to 90 guests and kids events such as Larry the Snake Guy and the Weekly Edward Arts, and they have Lucas Ross from Benjamin Museum this Thursday. Weekly Chess Club for 10 year olds and over. Uh, they have a sale returning off however fourth for kids, staying active and independent for life. And they will also be introducing the golf program, uh, for yoga on the evening on August 14th. And your reports are then quickly go front of you. The village arts association gave us an update. Audrey going to get back to, get her little one to bed. June 27th over the concert at Civic Plaza featuring the Grable Band, Channel Fact, maybe it'll look like a pretty fun event. Uh, Saturday, July 12th, they hosted the opening house of the animal welfare shelter to show off their new mural. Uh, September 6th, they'll have their second evening with Chili Cook Off. And still working diligently on the October 11th Arts Festival. Uh, they filled all available spots with 40 vendors and 10 food trucks. Uh, eight live performances and, uh, trying to get more village artists involved in that. I'll let you know that in your detail, but they're, they're doing a fantastic job. I just appreciate you with that, you're doing together. We're going to meet with them in August and then at the end of September and October. So we can de-reflect any issues between the group and the cities. We have no assumption of who's doing what for the arts festival. But, uh, really very exciting looking forward to that. Part final reports. Again, it's still raining and raining in July, so we've been impressed with the contract mowers. More for the upcoming, looking at some software, uh, for their permitting and licensing. And Ken's going to remove the building fee schedule, we'll communicate with you just. They're still on city and other communities.
Citywide, what do you mean and walk through?
Citywide is who we transitioned, that's one word, is who we transitioned or not driven sanitation. So I, I was wondering that too. I thought, Ken's kind of in the point of contact for that, so.
Okay.
They did do a walkthrough and check and see how that worked, everything. Public works, um, they, they kind of hurt some feelings closing the splash pad for a couple of days. That is not just to be mean and evil. We had this sewer door incident and then it turned out they did a sewer door on Stratford. But that impacted it, I think through a couple of pictures in here of that, but they diligently got those repaired and did a great job. And then fixed back up and got the splash pad back on the floor. Police department, 525 calls, 250 hours spent on those calls. 689 traffic stops, 318 citations. Patrol 8900, 75 miles. They are at full staff, empowered new dispatchers and charity training and also rightly successfully completed steel training. She spoke to members of the state of the, state of the parks meeting. Uh, training is up there to your right hand corner. And I don't really have any issues coming on, but.
How many of ours went down there to help with security?
I think three, I bet. And they got three. There they were, chief, captain, maybe four. Yeah, because, uh, that's that agreement with the squad team. Fire department, I don't know if they've been busy or they're just lucky to have a captain that's day out horse faced. Nothing's going good down there, they're having some fun, they do a lot of community engagement. You can tell they did a story, snowed up, station tour for homeschool academy. They were pediatric entry street, donuts apart, uh, fire cavity in Liberty Bash and First Liberty Bank. Chief Breeden, I mentioned graduating for the Oklahoma Executive Fire Officer, uh, Chief Jack. Uh, he's gone from a two reason army, couldn't break it up there, so with Chief Landon went up there. Just want to thank Chief Landon for attending that. It's probably not easy being a blue person, you don't want to know great people and not fuck with politics. It's about your own safety. Really appreciate Chief Landon covered down, so we got someone representing him up there.
What the training house, 312, can't, didn't remember. Is that which house? Is that that hospital? So that'll be it?
Well, we didn't, Bruce Mulker.
Bruce, so the fire department uses it, PD uses it, uh, we got some great training.
That stuff's great for you.
Well, let me, let me tell us something, please. Eric Oderlark wrote on that, uh, a couple of others, with, with, when did I subscribe? About Bruce Mulker, you know, going in and house to, uh, our police and fire departments for training purposes. Which is unbelievable. I mean, you know, usually you want to go and not that big house, dark room and recruit some. You know, I think he's done this before in some of the smaller houses that we spot. But what's really neat is that, and I, I live right down the street, so I, I saw the fire trucks over there one day when we were just doing this. So I drove down here and saw all our village group, whatever group was on, uh, on duty that day. They were all suited up in all their suits and their, their cover balls and their helmets and their oxygen masks. And that particular day they were, uh, uh, training on going into the second story. There could have been a person up there and a playbar up there, so their, 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 their work was to go up there, get into the second floor, do a search around the second floor and make sure nobody was in, you know, in trouble, in breathe, pass out, passed out. So they went through that training procedure. I filmed some of it and sent some to Eric, uh, pictures, but it, it, it just, they're using their radios, but all of a sudden, you know, some of these guys haven't done that before, you know, they're, they're new and, and so they're, they're, they're working on the ladders, they're working on commands, okay? They have to shout out certain things so the firemen can hear them, you know, and so it's all coordinated. You know, and, and, and again, I'm so big on recognizing the training that these guys do. It's not their honor, you know, their suspenders, their pants and their helmet and they, and go up and find these guys, head it down. Pat, and if they're throwing curve, they know how to try to adjust in time, you know, to, to, to make it, to make it work and save. And it's just so neat. They're all so young, you know, and it's so neat to see how they, they take commands. The guys that are the commanders out there are our group, just, you know, really great to work with. And if there's something they could have done better, they could have done it now. And that's training, that's what it's for. So I, this was a day too about it and, and I think Eric had the, had the, the police department, fire department write, write down kind of what they were going to do, the training methods they were going to do and that kind of thing. We have co-training with, uh, Nichols Hills and, and, uh, which is great, you know, since, since Nichols Hills comes and all of our fire alarms, we go to theirs. And, uh, what's really neat is if they get there first, they'll take the lead and then we'll, we'll, you know, our group of units will build it. Because already they're already set up. Our guys will take the backup and help them out. And it's just, you know, it's just the way everybody works together. It makes sense to me. You know, you just don't see other cities that can do that and, and we can do it because we have a group like Nichols Hills and they have a group like the village, you know, and they all cross train and stuff. So Nathan, I'm so proud that he wrote that article because the folks that read that understand that this is my, my, one of the things I contribute is this, even though we were a small, a smaller, uh, city, we are so highly trained that it doesn't matter, you know, we can handle any, almost anything that comes up. And, and if we, if we need help, we got to come up on the city and Nichols just, you know, it's just, it's just, it all works and we're very proud of that. And we've got a great group of people, great group of boys, chiefs, great, great chiefs, both sides, police and fire. So we're very fortunate and I just would like to make sure that we keep coming in on that and not somebody that says that you go through the village and you're driving fast or you're yellow or purple, they're out, they're going to send you a ticket. I mean, that kind of stuff is, is all BS, you know, the new stuff is these guys work the tails off for us, you know. They have no common goal, but that's to protect the village. Please and fire. The young guys are fantastic, you know, they're, they're, they're all, so many new, they're trained up so much more than, than back in the seventies, you know, when there was just a small city and there was a whole bunch of law and, you know, they're doing everything. They're trained up to so much more than, than back in the seventies, you know, when, when there was just a small city with a whole bunch of them on, you know, they're, they're doing everything. So it's very neat to see all that and I thank Eric for all that too. Eric, you do a good job covering us, appreciate it very much. I'm sorry I interrupted you.
Thank you, thank you. Any update from the city tourism?
What you got, Dave?
Come on, Dave. Well, in terms of general legal issues, to put them to the quiet moment, which is always a good thing.
That's a good thing, right?
Uh, as Dave noted, we'll have at least three or four probably developments this year, I think September or October, leading just an updating, uh, out of the code to be in line with state law. Or, uh, praise and new provisions in our code to mirror some new state laws.
Okay.
Um, and then I think they've also mentioned, uh, the O M L conference in September. If you guys haven't attended that before, I highly recommend it.
Welcome to eight.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Good night number nine, tell some of our comments. Would you like to go first?
Oh, me?
I don't think council member.
I, uh, this is.
And you're limited three minutes.
Ah.
Okay, you said.
Okay. Uh, but just one thing I, I want to mention, I have to, uh, go a birthday celebration, uh, yesterday in fact was. And they had, uh, contacted many, Matt, Maddie, Maddie's catering, um, for, for, to set up their whole thing. I mean, they, they didn't, the caterers didn't come to their house and set it all up, but they prepared all the food and, and whatnot. And they were stunned at how reasonable the price was in, in their.
In fact, they paid more.
Yeah, yeah, that's not a, not a, I'm beginning, I'm beginning. Um, and there, there were eight people there and they could have fed twelve or more. I mean, it was, it was an abundance of, of food. So if anybody, um, is, is in a situation like that, whether it's a family meal or something, they just don't have time to spend the whole day preparing a meal. It's, that's a, that's a great, great place to go. These guys swear by it and they don't live in the village, so that's a better thing. Uh, but they've, they've been introduced to it in our own press. And they, they, uh, one of them threw out the, the point that, that if you could do it from their catering menu, it's less expensive than if you do it from their menu and work it. So if you're at a catering level, take advantage of the, the, the price differential. He was also pitching that they have a great happy hour, but I don't know about that. And then. I don't know about that. Uh, thank you, David.
Thank you, David.
But why did you say that about it? I was very happy.
Was it a good deal?
No. Uh, very quickly, uh, there, right in the middle of the downpour, my phone took a message, uh, from somebody called Patrick. You know, not, not Patrick, right? Patrick, uh, lives on Major. He called complaining about all the houses on Major being, uh, flooding because of the, from the shopping centers that have, that are all, you know, that run and, and made. And I guess the water comes in and supposedly floods the houses that are on the block, you know?
Do the houses get water or does it just creep out?
I don't know, he was just mad.
And then turn up their tank on you.
You know, uh, so e- anyway, I mean, it's right in the middle of the flood. I'm assuming that there was a lot of people that are really in trouble with this and are, are trying to protect whatever they can, you know, or whatever they have to protect. And there's not a lot much you can do with the funk, with the funk problem. He wants something done. So the, what I would, what I would ask is, um, maybe, maybe we have, um, one of our engineers or somebody with, uh, you know, in one of the departments that can, can look at that kind of thing. Just go through, and I went through the alley right, uh, the other day, right, the day afterwards. And it seemed like to me there is, there is a down slope, but of course the curve always catches the down slope. Usually there's something else, like a little screen, but, you know, just dirt, you know, just before you get to houses. I'm not sure how it goes there. And, you know, I'm sorry I've done a five or six inch rain, it's going to happen in a lot of areas, you know, you just can't stop it. I guess the prudent thing to do would be just have somebody look at that area, see if they have, we have any suggestions if there's ever something like that that comes up. See the worship in my vocabulary, worship. Uh, that we can say we, we looked at it and there's something we can, we can think about or it's not, you know, that's, that's what it is. But I went into that, I think it was, it was not happening and, uh, his, his area was getting flooded. And that brings me to my next question. In order, is the habitat for man, he built stuff, it's still as dirt?
No, they've done it. They started working and they quit.
It's just dirt. I mean, they started.
Well, there's a poor cop in there.
Really? Well, okay. I saw some guy reach in the other day and pull out some wallpaper and he just tried to leave. So I guess people love their wallpaper too. But my, my point of that, have they done anything, but you know? I mean, they've done, the dirt work did obviously foundation.
I checked, Ken, is that.
Preparation with it. I was just curious if it, is it they run across something to be able to go about, like flood plain issue or anything else that we talked about? So if you talk to them, you know, nowadays, uh, it'd be good just to go through and just ask them, you know, if they've got something going on we should know about or not, they're just slow. But during all of our visiting with them, they were, they were very quick. They wanted to get people in just so they could, you know, the folks in the, that house. Then we talked about Eric's art article and we talked about, uh, can drive and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Can you go? You're, you're good. All right. I'm good as well. Um, and we have now new business today, so that leads to a turn of it. Thank you guys.
Well done, so one hour.
Next month will be six thirty.
Yeah, next, next month there won't be a tie.